All right, why don't we just start up?
Okay.
You're good.
Okay, so we are here today, well, number one. So we are here at the town council in the boardroom, special meeting, Monday, September 23rd, 2024, 7:00 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Roll call.
Christina? You're on mute. Christina, you're on mute.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's not going to be in order. Hillary Orman? Penny?
Here.
Here.
Mike? Morrow?
Here. Here.
Luke Kaufman? Maria Norton?
Here.
Kim? Norton?
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Rita Batino?
Here.
Jennifer Zonis?
Here.
Jen Zonis? I mean, Fonz, Jennifer. I'm sorry.
Janet Fonz.
Is Janice there?
I'm here.
Okay. Christina? Here. Did I miss anybody? I think we have-
Eric.
Yeah, I'm here, but you didn't call my name.
Tom Butterworth.
Eric Toon.
Okay, we have a call.
Eric Toon is still here. All right.
Hi, Eric.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And item two on the agenda is Plan of Conservation and Development, final review and vote on the Plan of Conservation and Development. So you've been forwarded a consolidated list of proposed recommendations to the and at this point now, we're just going to bring forward these motions for a vote. We'll follow our normal process of making a motion, second it, open it up for limited discussion to just points of whether you need clarification on anything in particular. We're not going to, we've had plenty of discussions, so it's not about debating the merits, about process or anything else. It's now full time to just take a vote, whether you're going to vote yes or no, take your vote. So at this time, we will move forward. If we can get a motion for motion number one made, please.
I'll make the motion for number one.
Kim has made the motion.
I'm sorry, are we doing this one thing at a time, or?
We're not reading through, this will be paid more, made part of the public record. We're not reading, you know, motion one, sub A, but we're not doing that.
But we're, but we're, are we actually approving or, or, or not approving each individual motion?
The, the motion itself-
I'm confused.
Okay.
Because I thought we were just going to endorse or not endorse, or like, or make suggestions, but, so you're saying we're literally going through every single motion that people have just have proposed?
Can I just explain?
I just, yeah.
The motion is to remove actions aimed at promoting, developing, or establishing any overlay district. That's the motion. What I've listed below all that are the specific actions and word changes that I think should be taken in order to achieve and pass that motion. Let me be perfectly clear, I am not against the P and Z Commissioner or anybody else considering transit-related development in town. What I am against is the establishment, or the encouragement or development to establish a specific overlay district over certain parts of downtown, because that necessarily makes the whole planning and zoning activity more complicated.
I guess all my only question is, so we're, we're literally looking at specific recommendations for each of these motions, is that true or not?
So my understanding, my understanding, you tell me if I'm right, is that we are not going to read every line of it.
I get that.
We are going to vote now as motion one, up or down, remove actions, da-da-da, overlay district, up or down. And so, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Oh, so we're not voting on the content, only the characterization at the top?
No, no, these are, as Eric explained, these are what he's proposed, these are A through whatever. A through M. As to what he believes proper wording should be for this proposed, his proposal up here.
Okay, so if we vote on, if we vote yay on motion number one, we're basically voting to approve every word on this page?
The recommendation, that's correct.
Okay. And the same for motion two, three, four.
Right, that's the process.
Okay, now I just, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I bet he thinks it's 7:30 like we normally.
Penny needs to mute.
Oh.
Um, yeah.
I just want to say Luke doesn't have a microphone, can you share with him? Thank you.
I'm pretty sure most of the mics in the room can pick me up, but sure, there are a couple inches as good.
I'm happy to share, but.
So Kim made the motion, do we have a second?
It was Eric, so I'll just consider that part of our discussion. Is there any discussion, any point of clarification that we need on any one of these? Having heard no discussion, we'll now move forward with a vote. All in favor of motion number one?
Hillary, if it's not unanimous, I have to do my roll call.
Okay, so let's do it by roll call, it is not unanimous. So Kim will take the roll call. So everyone keep their hands up, so.
Okay.
You should call, and you should call each member, and have them say yes or no.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
Jennifer?
No.
I'm writing as fast as I can. Maria?
Yes.
Okay, Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
I'm muted.
Yes.
Okay, so we have-
Um, hi.
I'm sorry, Hillary, I didn't see. Sorry, Hillary.
No.
Okay, thank you, Hillary, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
So we, do I give a tally, or?
Yes, give the tally.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six. Wait a minute, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses. And five noes. That's motion one.
All right, so motion one passes. Can we get a second for motion number two? Make the motion, any seconds? May. Let's open this up for discussion. Any discussion on motion number two, which is remove specific actions regarding bicycle usage that either subject new cane into regional objectives, or we require the use of town resources to establish or develop specific bicycle routes mandated by outside organizations? Does anyone have any specific clarity that they need on any one of these subpoints, A through B?
Yeah, I do.
There, okay.
Well, I just want to clarify that nothing in the P O C D requires the town to do anything or develop anything, so I just take issue with the, with the wording of the motion, but that's all I want to say.
Okay, record is noted for all time. Okay, so let's take a vote on motion number two, all in favor. All right, let's take the roll call again.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
Jennifer?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
Okay. So that is seven yeses and five noes.
Okay, so the motion passes. We'll now make a motion number three, which is, I'll make it, to ensure that zoning regulations pertaining to residential areas prioritize the concerns of majority of residents in the area over the concerns of any single non-residential constituent and or organization in such area. Can I have a second?
Second.
Eric's second, we'll open up for discussion.
I just want to make a comment that concerns of the majority of residents in an area, just to point out the vagueness of who determines the majority of residents, what is the area of residence, and then pertaining to the North Wilton, St. Luke's area, speaking as a resident and neighbor, you know, I disagree with some of the people presenting, so that's why that language is misleading.
Okay, noted. Any other comments, discussion?
No, just similar to the other comment that Hillary made, I, I, I just feel like this is not, it's redundant to say this, so I don't think it's necessary to actually approve this motion.
Okay, noted. Any, any other comment? No, okay, we'll take a vote, all in favor. All right, call the roll, please.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
Jennifer?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
Six, seven, so that's seven yes, uh, five noes.
Okay, the motion passes. Motion number four, can we have someone make that motion? Maybe Luke, you want to make the motion and read that, the fold?
Sure. Remove specific actions that expand the number of and/or feet, meters, miles of sidewalks.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
All right, opening up for discussion. Anyone need a point of clarity? Having heard none, we'll now take the vote.
Who else has questions? What concern does this address by removing this language?
Sure, so Eric, we want-
There is an item in the P O C D that encourages the development or establishment of a comprehensive sidewalk expansion plan. Given budgetary constraints and the fact that nine miles of sidewalk right now are not being cleared of ice and snow, and it's not clear who's going to do that. Before we have an expansion plan, I think we need to address that issue. I don't have a problem with a comprehensive sidewalk plan. I have a problem with a comprehensive sidewalk expansion plan.
Okay.
But again, we're not mandating this, there's something that-
Mandated is all advisory.
There's nothing in the whole P O C D that's mandate.
For saying that, because-
It's advisory.
So we're all clear, that is correct. This is purely advisory. I even nerded out earlier today and did my own Lexus research, I've seen cases on it, it's all advisement, so please rest assured that we all are clear on it. Okay, so let's move to vote, all in favor. Okay, let's call the roll.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
Jen for-
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
No. Sorry, that was kind of meant for my dog, but I vote no on also, sorry about that.
What's his name? I'm going to put it in the record.
I was telling Lenny to be quiet.
All right, so that's seven yeses and five noes.
All right, the motion passes. Motion number five, can we get a motion for five? Eric makes the motion, would you please read it?
Motion is to ensure that actions related to sustainability, resiliency, and climate change are made based on rigorous examination of available scientific data and not on mandates lacking such data.
Okay, I'll second it. Now open it up for discussion, any discussion, points of clarity?
I just would want to make the point that to my recollection, we have none of, ever discussed a word of this
Yeah.
in, in the town, at a town council level, so this, this whole premise that we're speeding through this process because we've already debated everything, I'd say that's true of maybe a third of what we're voting on, at best, so I just want to make that point.
Okay, Paul, is there any other discussion on it? Now's the time. Having heard no other discussion, no other comments or questions, we'll now move forward with the vote, all in favor. All right, let's call the roll.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
Jennifer?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
Okay, so that's seven yes, five noe on motion four.
Okay. Motion passes. Maria, can you make the next motion, please?
Sure.
And that was motion five.
That was five.
One, great. Uh, motion-
Six.
Six. Enhance civic participation, and I'd like to make a motion to enhance civic participation in the Planning and Zoning Commission's review of applications. That change should be made.
Luke seconds it.
Wait, I'm sorry, what was the change?
Enhance, what's written down, enhance civic participation in the Planning and Zoning Commission's review of applications.
Sorry, I thought you said there was a change to that, my bad.
Okay, we had the second from Luke, any discussion on this, any points of clarity?
Is there an implication that residents are not involved or have a voice in in zoning regulations? I'm just curious.
So, so follow up on what, yeah, what Janice is saying, I would just like to say that I feel that the, uh, the plan in zoning and the, and the town communicated excellently, and, um, and I think that it is civic responsibility to take notice of what's in the press and, and what is constantly being, you know, promoted to you to take action if you're interested, and not to complain after the fact. So I think that, and the, uh, concept that you, you wouldn't be able to do any action unless a majority of residents approve it first, uh, based on even many of my friends and colleagues, they don't pay attention sometimes and don't participate, so that would hamstring us from getting anything done in this town.
Yeah, I'd like you to speak up on that. So I, I don't think that anyone's criticizing, I think that Planning and Zoning, this committee did a wonderful job, I just think that it's the best practices to try to get more people involved, because we'd like to have as many residents know as what's going on as possible, so it's purely a recommendation, it's not a mandate, because the whole P O C D is advisory.
Exactly, but that suggests that maybe it hasn't been done, and I, I think that's a real slap in the face, honestly, for the work that these people have done from beginning to end, getting cross-sections of people, different types of people, different formats, I mean, it was exhaustive. I think this is really, it's, I find it, um, I, I, I just like it's a slap in the face, I, I think it's, yeah, I don't agree with it, but. I mean, I, I have to say the document was really long, a lot of people I've talked to have not read it, a lot of residents just haven't gone through this, so, um, even seeing the implementation post-draft of the implementation feedback was probably not enough. So I mean, that's why I'm okay with this advice in this, um, P O C Ds. You know, we have technology, there are ways to reach every household, so I, I don't know that this could hurt, I think it could help.
Thank you, I just wanted to say, can I say something? I mean, the overall topic is um, goal 1.4, encourage continued community involvement and civic engagement, so this is just any kind of recommendation to add more voices to what's going on in planning and zoning, and it's not about what happened in the past, it's about going forward.
So, go ahead, Maria.
I'm sorry, I was going to say that the fact that the plan is done every 10 years, and there's a whole lot of growth in this plan. So I think that's what makes it extra important to ensure as things are going through, a lot of people know, and I'm not saying that, that wasn't done enough in the past, I think there was so much feedback that was received and sought prior, and I know people can email and, and reach out, and there's nothing stopping that, but, um, I think going forward with the amount of changes, this, this plan looks so different than 2014, it, it's just probably best practice to increase the level of contact. Just, yeah, I think that Hillary also had a comment.
Yeah, Hillary, please.
Um, I just think, in addition to what my colleagues have said, I think it's vague, the language that's being suggested, again, what is a neighborhood? How are you, what does it mean for the majority of the neighborhood to be involved? If anything goes on, does that happen with, you know, somebody who wants a variance at their house, then you have to poll whoever the neighborhood is determined to be, or we're recommending that, I just think that this suffers from a tremendous amount of vagueness, and, um, you know, again, I I just have a real problem with this.
Thank you, oh, go ahead, Tom.
Just chiming in real quick, and I may be anticipating what Dan and John are going to say. I think that the way the Planning and Zoning Commission interacts with residents is laid out in great specificity in state law, and we're basically espousing them to disregard state law in order to meet what we think is a better way to run the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I have to vote against that, adamantly oppose that.
Can I say anything? I, I don't think that's the case at all, Tom, there are standards for what planning and zoning does, but for instance, action number B on page 58 says engage in a proactive neighborhood planning process. So I'm taking the words from the P O C D.
Which is exactly what we just did over the last year in engaging people for the P O C D.
Yes, this is, this has nothing to do with the past.
Hold on, hold on. We can just, hold on a second, let me be very clear. I am the chairman of the town council, this is not a free-for-all, okay? I wasn't going to have any discussion at all, but out of respect for the work that you did, which I've repeatedly stated over time, it's admirable work, it's hard work, I think you did a fantastic job, I absolutely did, absolutely. I commend the work, you volunteers, and you're being treated respectfully. But this goes for anybody in any of my meetings, I don't care who it is in this town. Nobody starts calling out, there's no back and forth, you get recognized by the chair like every other, Todd LaVieri doesn't, uh, tolerate it, the first selectman doesn't tolerate it, neither does, uh, the, the previous first selectman, so no crosstalk, this isn't just a free-for-all, okay? That's number one. Number two, again, out of respect, I want to hear from you guys in a limited fashion, I don't think that your process regarding getting public input was bad, I think you did what you were supposed to do. I think like everything else, every process is subject to improved calibration and refinement. So I think that's what this motion is speaking to, I, I see people getting their back up, and everyone's putting their gloves and helmets on right now. I'm going to give this like another minute to two minutes, so you guys can say where you want to stay, and we're going to take a vote, okay? So please, go right ahead.
I apologize, I thought I had the option to speak since you were nodding to me just before Hillary spoke, and then a couple other commission members spoke, so I was interjecting at what I thought was the right time, and I apologize if you took it the wrong way.
I didn't take it the wrong way, I was allowing my members to speak, and then I was going to say, now I'd like to turn it all over to the, the two that I have, I want to-
Again, I misunderstood, because you waved my way earlier, and I thought-
Please, I want to hear from you.
So, I understand your criticisms in motion six, explore Beck's practices, knowing, knowing what we do and how we do it, and the fact that we're regulated by state mandates in terms of notifications and public engagement, meeting notifications, et cetera, et cetera. What recommendations do you have as a town council for us to better engage the public? We don't have any other way of engaging the public other than the way we do it in terms of public notices, having public meetings, not only for the P O C D, but for our general applications. That's how it's done in the state.
Right.
We're not going to go against that, regardless of what you guys say here, I'm sorry, we're just not going to, because we're mandated by the state to do it a certain way, as are you, and by the town charter.
Right, I, can I introduce?
So, first of all, I totally concur with Mike, I think you guys did an excellent job, you went by your statutes, you did everything you needed to do, this is just kind of aspirational. And I don't know exactly how to achieve that, maybe, you know, meeting with other people on, in the town, like the, the Board of Selectmen, and maybe other boards, as some way to kind of see if we could get, there's a lot of terms in the P O C D that people don't know what they mean that didn't self-select into the process, you know, that were maybe less engaged citizens.
We can't fix that. We can't force people to read the draft and respond to it. What we can do is notify people, which we've done via the website blasts, the first selectman's web email blasts, via public notification in the newspapers and online. It's been there, it's available for everyone to look at, read, and comment, we can't force people to do that. I'm just not sure what else we can do that you're looking for. Because in the same breath, you say that we've done a great job, but then you say that we need to do better. Dan, uh, John, go ahead, please, and then Eric.
Okay, so I'm recognized by the chair, thank you. What it says is review applications, the P O C D is not, not an application. An application is you, Mike Morrow, want to build a garage, you need a special permit, that's an application. As Planning and Zoning Commissioner or, and Chairman, Radman just mentioned, we are required by state law to follow certain procedures, which we do, which include publishing our, uh, agenda, what we plan to do and so forth, nothing's done to the dead of night, it's all open to public uh, commentary. And so I would also suggest that if anyone, anyone who has ever attended Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will realize that as far as any commissioner board, elected or otherwise, in this town does not get any more public involvement than a Planning and Zoning Commission, we have people literally bursting out of the room, I think the fire marshal is going to rate us at some point because of the number of people. And so to suggest that, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not doing a good enough job spreading the news of what we're trying to do, trying to do it, and receiving input, I just can't wrap my mind around. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Eric?
Um, I am persuaded by some of my colleagues, and after a reread of the P O C D and hearing Commissioner Chris and Commissioner Radman, um, I'm persuaded that this motion is unnecessary, given the existing language that is, um, already arguably vague to begin with, so.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, I would just make one last point, and I appreciate you guys coming up and speaking, I, I don't think that this is saying that there was a terrible job done here, uh, and just as, you know, as you interpret statutes, statutes always set the floor, okay? It's, these are the things that you must do, it's, so you must at least do those, right? I'm not saying anything more than that, so when I hear, oh, let's disregard what the law says, or, you know, this is the only thing we can do, the statute sets the floor of what can be done. That, that's just basic statutory interpretation, so I just wanted, maybe wanted to be clear on, but with that said, pretty sure I know how everyone's voting, so let's just take a two or vote, if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't. Okay, so all in favor? All right, call the roll.
Mike?
Yeah.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Janet?
No.
Jen?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, so that's six to six.
I, I, I agree with Eric, and I think the language is too vague, and so I'm going to vote no.
Okay, motion fails. Move on to motion seven, if we could make the motion. Christine, you want to make the motion?
Remove and amend specific actions related to existing infrastructure.
Okay, I'll second it. Discussion? Any questions, any point of clarity?
I'd like to just point out on the second one, 2.14, action D, says consider requiring, but, um, I don't know the exact language, but, but it's probably, it says require privately funded infrastructure improvements and mitigation efforts when new private developments are expected to have significant incremental impact on such infrastructure. So it's, it's actually a rule that's rife with common sense, I can't imagine wanting to tinker with that rule, but we're tinkering with it by softening it, by saying, well, we'll just consider that. Uh, it makes no sense to me, just wanted to make that point, I think the, the rule is incredibly effective as it is.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, we'll go straight to a vote. All in favor? Call the roll, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
Jennifer?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
That's seven yes and five noe.
Okay. Motion passes, uh, motion number eight, Penny, can you?
Do you mean that how?
Christina, if you'd, you'd make this motion as well, please.
Okay. Page two, amend the introduction.
Guys, if everyone, just to read along, go to your supplement.
Okay, so it's, okay, perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
On with the bluish. All right, Christina, why don't you make that motion so people understand?
It's on page two. It's amending the introduction to the P O C D. And the recommended sentence to be included is the Planet Conservation Development. And it continues.
All right, just give us a moment to review it.
Christina, is the point you're referring to the second bullet point under proposed amendment in that?
It's page two. It's just a sentence, the Planet Conservation.
Oh, I see, I see. Sorry. So this is actually two separate motions that you're making.
I'm making one motion. It's to amend the introduction. On page two.
Okay.
It says page three amend.
It says page three.
That's the next motion.
It's all part of the. It's all part of one motion.
Well, we consolidate this as one motion, Christina, so.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we could break it into separate if you want, or we can just, you know, say, look, this is what the motion is. It's page two, page three, and then he's ones at the bottom here.
Yes.
You, you tell us what you want. One, one motion with all of these?
Yes, I would prefer one motion with all of them, if you want.
So we saw page two, page three.
Page fifty-seven, there are two, page fifty-nine, and page seventy-nine.
Okay, to the extent that anyone needs more time to consider this motion and its subports, let me know. Well, actually, first of all, we have the motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Can, can I ask a question?
Okay, yes, go right.
What concern are we addressing here?
So Christina, you want to? Sure, Christina, address that, please.
The concern is that on the introduction, it doesn't introduce the P O C D properly or clearly. And I wanted to define it as per the General Statute, Section eight dash twenty-three, on the amendment to the introduction, on the amendment of what's the Planet Conservation Development. There's some pretty clear points that's made in the statute that should be outlined. And specifically stating that the Planet Conservation Development, I'm not quoting, I'm paraphrasing, is basically a non-mandatory implementation. It's a vision.
Okay. I thought it was already clear that it was non-mandatory.
Christina, Janet had a follow-up questionnaire. Do you want to respond to it?
That was a question? No.
Yeah, I just, I thought the language was already clear that it was non-mandatory.
No, it was proposed to be amended, but it hasn't been amended.
Hillary, answer hand up.
Hillary, please. You're on mute, Hillary.
Oh, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are on mute. I can hear you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, again, I, I don't know that this, these language changes are necessary. For instance, the remove Action F on page fifty-nine is about, I think, stormwater management, so I'm not sure. I just don't, I don't understand the logic, but I also want to say quickly that I think the idea that I'm hearing at least is that what Planning and Zoning did here in drafting this P O C D was adequate and just simply met statutory guidelines, and I, I take issue with that. I think they went above and beyond, and I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
It is. Thank you, Hillary. Any other questions, comments, or concerns or discussion? Having heard none, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Call the roll, please.
Sure. Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
No.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Christina?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jennifer?
No.
Sorry, Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
Seven yes and five no.
Okay, the motion passes. Last motion here on the same document, motion number nine, if you'd make that move.
So I both make the motion to vote on motion number nine?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Ensure that wireless communication enhancements include exploration of all available technologies and does not favor any technology, and such, such exploration proceeds in a thorough and methodical manner. So we got some comments from members of the public who just wanted to make sure that all the technologies are considered on even playing field, so to speak, and so they, the recommendation is to delete comments added by the Utilities Commission, so I put the comments added by the Utilities Commission with a citation if you want to read it, if you want to look at the link. And the motion is to delete cell towers, delete as soon as possible, and delete immediate priorities.
Yes.
That you can remove a commission's comments on the P O C D. You can make, they have this, like any member of the public, that's all part of the public record. You can't remove what they have to say. You can say whatever you want to say as a body, but you can't remove what the Utilities Commission has offered as public, as comment on the document.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate that. So is, is that what the intent here is to remove a comment from the Utilities Commission?
It's to amend the Utility Commission comment on the P O C D.
I think that's something I, 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 we can't put words in their mouth.
All right.
Is there any other part of, so we'll strike that portion of the motion. Is there any other part of this?
No, I'd just like to go on the record as saying that there's all available technologies and that my recommendation as a town council member is to have P and Z review this.
Okay, so this motion number nine, there is no motion number nine.
Right.
So that was the motions that we had on the calendar, so I think eight motions, seven passed, so we have the seven recommendations approved on votes. So at this point, we now would can move the P O C D back to P and Z and the ball goes back into their court. So we have our recommendations that we are passing along to P and Z. And at that point, I guess, just as a matter of priority, we would have to, more for statutory approvals, where we'd have to take a vote to, I guess, because there are no other modifications, so I think the balance of it, everyone's in agreement with it. So I think statutorily, we need to take a motion to say, we approve the P O C D going back to P and Z with our recommendations for them to consider only. That, that's all they can do is consider the recommendations. That's their statutory prerogative.
Yeah, to use other language, are we saying we endorse the P O C D with our approved recommendations?
Yes.
That's, it's what, it's required of us at some point to endorse or reject or.
I'm using the word endorse because that's what I understood.
Right, so it's it's endorse or reject the entire plan or any part thereof. So we will endorse the P O C D to go back to P and Z with our recommendations. And like I said, they will take them, whatever they want to take them for. Okay, so I will make the motion to endorse the P O C D to return back to P and Z along with the approved motions on the recommendations to P and Z. So can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh, I don't know, is Hillary voting yes or no?
Wait, are we, we're in, sorry, can you verify the motion again? Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not understanding because that would be. Can I, can I? With, with your question, sorry. So in my understanding, our job, our, our instructions from the beginning of this process are to endorse this document, reject this document, or endorse with recommendations. So we've had our votes, and now the document is as such coming out of us, so so our opportunity now is to endorse the, the P O C Ds with the changes.
That's correct.
But, but if we don't, what we're voting for, if you don't.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'll let you clarify. If, if we were not to vote in favor to endorse, I, I'm sorry.
Let me clarify, because our recommendations are not changing this document. It's up to P and Z to decide whether they want to include our recommendations. So by saying, like I can understand from, if I was Jennifer, I was voting yes, let's approve it. It doesn't mean I'm approving, you know, certitiously, these motions that I just voted no for. They're simply recommendations to go back, it's P and Z, and it goes back to them to figure out what they want to do next. So similarly, it would be like for me, voting yeah, of course I'm going to vote to yes to endorse. I'm not endorsing, I'm not saying, and I don't want any changes and just, you know, wipe away my yes votes that I just made on these motions.
So I'm on record for expressing what I don't approve, but I can be on record for endorsing the document as such going forward.
Correct. It cuts both ways for both of us. Absolutely.
But I just, I do have a question about how you're phrasing it. Now, if, if the question is, do you endorse or reject? I get it. But you're saying, you had said endorse with those. But that's a third option for this process. So that's why, that's what's confusing to me.
Right, so the motion is to endorse the P O C D and along with the recommendations. That's what it is.
So we didn't endorse the P O C D from everybody. If everyone in here said, hey, we're, we're in favor, then that would be full endorsement. What we're saying is we endorse with these recommendations, or we reject with no recommendations.
Because we've made recommendations and we have to now.
We're on record with recommendations.
Vehicle for sending them along. That's what the statute says.
But I thought our, our job, sorry, I thought our job is either endorse or reject.
That's, that's not it.
Or, or offer recommendations as a third option.
I'll read it.
So I'm just confused.
Legislative body or Board of Selectmen, as the case may be, may hold one or more public hearings on the plan and shall endorse or reject, reject such entire plan or part thereof or amendment, and may submit comments and recommended changes to the commission. So it's not just, it's either endorse or reject, that's the end of it. That's not the end of our statutory rule.
Right, but we could recommend suggestions, which was done, and I feel like then it's either you endorse or reject.
There's another provision in the statute that I think is more important than what we're discussing. And it's very specific. If any plan, section or plan or recommendation on the plan that is not endorsed in the report of the legislative body may only be adopted by the commission by a vote of not less than two-thirds. My point is that every change we're recommending is essentially is a non-endorsement of that provision. So there are sixty non-endorsement resolutions that we've approved, roughly, between forty and sixty. And so, the Planning and Zoning Commission has the ability to override each of those sixty by a two-thirds vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It's possible.
So it, it kind of doesn't matter what we say. It's, it's, it's a, it, there's a lot of.
It's a process.
There's a lot of non-endorsement going on and, and it puts, as Mike said, it puts it in their court.
Right, and by the way, it sounds like everyone's going to vote yes to endorse this, so this, this discussion's almost really academic at this point. Because again, it goes back to P and Z and they were gonna run with their process, so. I mean, is any, let me ask you, is anyone willing to vote no to endorse this, this P O C D?
Well, I'm. I would vote.
Unmute.
You're unmute.
It, it depends, because what, what, what I think the right answer is, what you're saying, Mike, is that, and maybe the people who voted on these recommendations can weigh in. Are you, are you rejecting that portion of the P O C D if P, if that amendment is not made? Or are we, like, I think there's two separate inquiries. Are we endorsing or rejecting the P O C D? And then separately, we can submit a list of recommendations. So we've done the latter part. We've done the list of recommendations. Now the question is, do we endorse it or reject it as presented without these? Because we're just, we're just offering them recommendations. Or are those who voted for these amendments saying we are going to, we reject it unless these are made? Because I heard Luke say something else. Like, I heard Luke say that, that it's a rejection.
No, I, I definitely said.
Recommendations.
No, I definitely said the opposite of what you just said. I said exactly, thank you Penny for nodding. Uh, yeah, no, I said exactly what you just said. The option is initially to start, if you have a full, everyone agrees, and it passes. Or if not, then you either decline by a majority, okay? Or there's recommendations and they're voted on like we did tonight, and then say collectively, are we approving the P O C D as is with these recommended changes?
Right.
Those three options.
Yes, that's, that's the way I understood it. I heard you say something different. I heard you say.
We're in alignment, Hillary.
Let me, please.
Sorry, what?
So I just, sorry. Oh, sorry, Hillary, did you have more to say?
No, I didn't hear what Luke just said to me.
I said we're in alignment.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so what Mike said is correct. So you can accept this and pass along to the Planning and Zoning Commission your recommendations. So you don't have to, you know, say that you don't accept it unless you make the changes. That's what, that was my question. That's what it seemed like we were saying. So I would urge you to passive, with recommended changes and allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to absorb your recommendations because that's their job.
And do their process, one way or the other.
Yes. So you've made it clear what you as a town council want to do. I mean, or, you know, it's, it's sort of split, but you've, you've made your recommendations and they can take those recommendations and choose to do what they want to do with them.
Exactly.
For the record, I think some of us want to vote an unequivocal endorsement.
You don't need to do that.
But we want to.
Okay. Okay. But you've made that known, sorry, Mike.
Actually.
You've made that known in your no votes.
And yes, and yes votes.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't really, I don't agree with the way all this has been characterized. I think I have something very simple.
But it doesn't change what the.
No, it has nothing to do.
If you did it this way, where you say, I pass it with these recommended changes. It doesn't hamstring the Planning and Zoning Department from doing anything that they choose to do as a board. They can take your recommendations, they can say, we agree or we don't agree, but they have your recommendations. And, and we have the public votes of who voted for and against each record. So I would urge you to keep the motion as it is, as a recommendation, a, a, a pass with a recommendation, with a recommendation. It's just we're going against ourselves. Because we've said no, and then now we're saying, yeah.
The town council clearly has voted and we know what the town council is gonna do.
Yeah.
And it's basically gonna give them a bunch of recommendations. That is not an endorsement of all those provisions, and it's in their court. I'm saying something different. I'm saying that, that a minority of us are of the view, I don't agree with that. We just want to go on record for what we do believe.
So would you?
Which is a full endorsement.
So, well.
Vote on that.
Okay. I agree.
Tom, if I may, you had a list of some twelve to fifteen specific recommended changes in the P O C D as well. So clearly you were not unequivocally in support of the P O C D as it was written. I think we all had some recommendations and some ideas that we wanted to see changed. The majority, seven to five, in seven of the motions, voted to send forth these recommended changes. So those are going to the P and Z and that's theirs. We all, twelve out of twelve had some ideas about how to change this document. It was never going to come to us and go back completely untouched, saying, we're very happy with everything in this document, every single word. Because everybody here had some questions as to a recommended change. So there is no unequivocal endorsement of the P O C D as written, going back to them.
Let, let, just let me go back to the language. She'll endorse or reject such entire plan or part thereof or amendment and may submit, and may submit comments and recommended changes. The may is separate from the endorse or reject. You can, you can, you can endorse and submit comments. I realize that's not what you guys want to do.
No, that is what we're doing.
You want to make, you want to make your endorsement contingent on them accepting.
Clarified, that was clarified there.
Absolutely not. Anyway, it, there's no. Anyway, it, there's no disputing what the majority intends. It's not ambiguous. I, I, I think we're all, we all understand that. I'm simply saying that the minority wishes to express its view as well and to go on record.
Okay. What?
And you have. But by virtue of your no votes, they are recorded. Everybody knows who they are. It's, it's by virtue of your having voted. You've, you've made it known.
Jenna.
By voting yes, I'm not saying I agree with every amendment. I'm saying as a body, I agree with the motion to go forward.
To move forward back to them.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Our recommendations aren't worth subway fare unless the P and Z adopts them. I mean, I hate to say it is so crudely, but that's really what it is. But we are, and we made motions and all, but that's, that's as far as it goes. So uh, so we can, if everyone understands the motion, which will be as simple as, I'll just say this and I'll make the formal motion, endorsing the P O C D with recommended changes. Okay? That's what the motion will be.
Along with That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Along with the recommended.
That, that Along with, yes. That's all, that's
Did he say condition?
I'm sorry.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Because I just, yeah.
I agree. That, I think that, that, that
Can we make a suggestion?
Want to work Smith?
The wording of the motion?
Go ahead.
Perhaps it should be that we move that the town council endorse the P O C D and approve returning it to the Planning and Zoning Commission with recommended changes.
I can support that. Any changes to that language? Well said.
I think it, it describes what transpired here tonight. I think this is
Eric, why don't you make that motion?
Yeah.
I move that we approve and endorse, I move that we endorse the twenty twenty-four P O C D previously submitted to us. And return it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their finalization.
That's too many words.
And return it to the Planning and Zoning Commission along with the recommended changes.
We're, approve recommendations and return it to P and Z with returns of P and Z.
Along with a list of recommended.
That's all you need. That's all you need.
Return to
Can someone, can someone say it cleanly and then some, I can second it?
Take out return.
Move we endorse the P O C D and return it to the Planning and Zoning Commission along with recommended changes.
Period.
Jennifer, second.
A bipartisan.
All in favor?
Let's go.
It's unanimous.
All right.
All right, call the roll. Roll time. This is it.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Rita?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Eleven one.
What?
I said, oh, yeah.
And he said eleven to one.
Eleven to one.
The motion passes. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I vote, I, I guess.